Good afternoon and welcome to the August 25th, 2025 meeting of the Select Board. I'm going to call us to order here at 5:05. We have Member Wells, I believe, is on remotely with us. So we have Mr. Daley and myself here. Ms. Hegarty, I'm hoping we'll be able to dial in later, but we do have a forum with Mr. Wells online. So with that, we have received your materials. So thank you very much. And I want to start by saying I'm sorry the process was a little irregular. I talked about that a little bit last week. I think there were some crossed wires and we're happy to have you guys in and run through some questions. So what we've been doing with the other firms is going through a list of questions. We're kind of passing the baton of who's asking them. It's the same questions that we've asked everyone. So we'll just go ahead and do that. And the first question is the please introduce yourself and talk about your attorney's experience and your interest in working with Milton and what your roles would be in working with the town.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman and other members of the board, present in person and otherwise. My name is Catherine Hesse and I am one of the founding partners of Murphy, Hesse, Toomey &amp; Lehane. And I'm here not because I'm going to be part of your day-to-day team. You have here your proposed lead counsel, Kate Connolly, and proposed lead backup counsel, Charis North. We also have behind me Jamie Donnelly and Eddie Singer, two of our tremendous team of associates who do a lot of work in this area. I can leave it mostly to Kate and Charis to go over some of the subparts of that question. But just to let you know why I'm here, I just wanted to express our deep commitment to the town of Milton. Many of us, including many of my partners, as well as myself, live in Milton. I'm a citizen of Milton. I love Milton. Many of them were born here and lived here all their lives, John Flynn, Arthur Murphy, Cathy Murphy, and others, their senior counsel. But I was a military brat and I had to find a place that would be my home. And I've lived here now for over 40 years. I love it. It's a wonderful town. And I'm just on the other end of the phone as a senior member of the management committee and founding partner to give you our assurances that if there's ever any concern with anything that we're doing or not doing, if we can ever improve in any way, if you're ever having any problems, you can reach out to your team here, but you can also reach out to me personally. So I want to let you know that the firm stands behind this because Milton is a very important community to us, both because we live here, work here, and love the town and also because you're one of our first and long-term clients. So we also have a very deep and broad bench, I think, and an unusually deep and broad bench. I think at least half a dozen, if not more of us, have been recognized by our peers across the state and been elected as president of the Mass Municipal Lawyers Association and also a number of specialty associations. For example, you hear about Kate and her expertise in so many different areas, including the Mass, what is it, the Mass Association Conservation Commissioners? So this is very important to us. We care about it and I think that we also have an unusual depth of experience. I think some firms have only done town council and so they don't have, their experience may be perhaps narrower than ours. And what we bring to the table is the ability to have looked at so many other things, be able to see and predict what other people, contractors coming in, you know, if you're, you know, you've got an architectural contract, whatever it is. So I may pop in later on more specific questions. I don't know what we ask. But what I'd like to say is that we also pride ourselves on having not only a deep and broad bench of attorneys who are really tremendous attorneys, but also a diverse bench that we've worked very hard to. As you might notice, we have three women here speaking to you today. We also have a lot of great men. But when I started, I was the first woman and that wasn't true. It took a lot of hard work to do that. We also have people of color in our firm, including in major positions of leadership. I brought on one who is now leading up, co-leading up our public retirement area, just to give you an idea. And also, we have people from China, people who grew up in Ukraine. So we really pride ourselves on the diversity of cultural, gender, age, specialty, et cetera. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to our proposed lead counsel, Kate Connolly. And if I didn't emphasize it enough, I know that your procedure has been somewhat irregular and I want you to know how much we appreciate you taking the time to talk to us today, to hear a little bit about us, to meet us in person. And we're very grateful to that.
Yes, thank you and thank you, Catherine. I'm Kate Connolly. And while I'm relatively new to the firm, I'm not new to municipal law because I've been practicing for over 32 years. I started at Culpeper and Page, which is now KP Law. I was there for 16 years, nine of them as a partner. And I, just like all my colleagues at Murphy, Hesse, Toomey &amp; Lehane, we all do all the general municipal law, open meeting law, public records, ethics, conflicts, finance, all of the general municipal things. And we do trainings on them as well. My main practice areas are land use litigation, well, land use permitting first and then hopefully you can avoid the litigation, but then also land use litigation. When I was at Culpeper and Page, I was lead counsel for seven towns and I've had special counsel municipalities. And actually, most recently, I was in-house in a municipality. So I had that perspective as well. Conservation is one of my big areas, as Catherine mentioned. I do general land use, which most land use attorneys do zoning, planning, enforcement, and that sort of thing. Not as many, although Charis and I both do conservation, not as many do conservation cases, maybe because it's very scientific and technical. But I've always enjoyed it and so I've lucked out that somebody else in a particular firm where I was, like when I was at KP Law, they don't want to do it, then I get to do it. After, or actually while I was at Culpeper and Page, I got asked by an opposing counsel who'd had litigation against her over 10 years to join his firm. And that was a wonderful opportunity because I got to continue municipal law, but bring in some private clients. And that gave me a really good perspective for my municipal law, really for both. But the municipal clients trusted me when I was representing applicants before them because they knew what my real background was. And then I was able to provide my municipal clients with a better background of understanding what the applicants have to go through and how they might want to respond to them in a better manner. Sometimes it was a developer and sometimes at the end of a project or even during a project, before it goes to litigation, my clients, in that case, Mass Audubon, oftentimes are there appealing or getting ready to oppose something that a developer is going to do. So that was an interesting perspective that I got to do that as well as the municipal stuff. And one interesting thing when I was representing Mass Audubon on a matter, and had them in all different municipalities, one was in the town of Sharon. Planning Board and Conservation were reviewing a development and Mass Audubon owned property next to it. And so they wanted to make sure the development got permitted in a way that wasn't going to affect their property adversely. It ended up really well. Everybody was happy at the end of it, no litigation. And then the town of Sharon hired me to write and revise their wetlands bylaw. So that was a plus. As I said, I've represented seven towns, really nine, throughout my career as main town council. So I'm comfortable doing that. And as lead counsel, what I would anticipate is that I would be the gatekeeper of any matters that come in to the firm so that it's efficient, so that you're not having, and there'd be a gatekeeper here as well. A town administrator would review things from town employees or board chairs, rather than letting them send it directly to us so that you're not having two different people send the same question, giving us different facts and then getting a different answer from each person. So I would be the gatekeeper. I would do most of the work, cover your town meetings. We've already looked at October 27th to make sure nobody had a conflict. Anything I couldn't do, Charis would do or we would assign it out to somebody else to handle. But I'm very comfortable being lead counsel. We're also flexible and I'm comfortable if you were to want us to flip it and have Charis be the lead counsel. We're happy to do trainings as well. And we mentioned, Catherine mentioned, Mass Municipal Lawyers Association and the Mass Association of Conservation Commissions. I've done trainings, I know Charis has done trainings for both of those on all the topics that I just mentioned, all the general municipal stuff. And we did put in our proposal that we would give some free training to the town, to town officials, employees as well. And we are still happy to do that. And I think at this point, unless you have specific questions for me, I'm going to defer to Charis.
Good afternoon. Thank you so much for having us. I'm Charis North and I'm the proposed backup counsel. I've been with Murphy, Hesse, Toomey &amp; Lehane almost 20 years now. Before that, I actually started my life as a regulator at the Environmental Protection Agency in Washington DC at headquarters. I went to law school. I then worked for the state of Maryland in the Energy Agency. And then I went to work for the private sector as an environmental lawyer in DC and Boston and then landed at Murphy, Hesse because I really wanted a public sector practice. And while I've done a fair amount of litigation with them, I have, you know, developed a specialty in municipal law and currently am lead town council for four communities. And then I have some special counsel work that I do on a variety of things. My, you know, I'm a generalist. I consider myself the sort of general counsel of a municipal corporation. And I have that, all of those skills and the ability to work on a variety of issues. I certainly have some specialties, as Kate mentioned. I have a deep environmental background. I've done a lot of work on affordable housing across the Commonwealth. I do a lot of governance. I work with boards and committees on how to be a good board and a committee, how to run your board meetings well. I do a lot of open meeting law and public records training. I just this summer did the Mass Municipal Associations, Select Boards Associations, training for the new select board members that were elected. So perhaps your new board members were there at Devon's. I did that training and I've done that before. I was doing a bunch of webinars on land use, private roads and things like that with the MMA and the MMLA. I'm a past president of the MMLA and I was elected top woman in law in 2023. So I've been around for a while and I, you know, I'm really committed to and really love this work. I've been working sort of behind the scenes as a backup in Milton, back from John Flynn's days, from my earliest time at Murphy, Hesse. I've done a variety of projects for the town of Milton and very much enjoyed them and feel very comfortable in Town Hall, even though most of the players have turned over by now. But it's always been one of those communities that, as Catherine mentioned, we're, you know, really proud to serve. And so, you know, Kate and I work down the hall from each other. We work on a variety of clients together. And so we have a very open, regular discussions. And anything that she needs assistance with, I'm prepared to help. And again, if you want to flip who's in charge and who's lead, that's also something that we can do. We do do, and I just, the trainings that we do and that we have offered to do is a complimentary part of our proposal, I think are really important to getting your board members in particular up and running, particularly when there's a lot of changeover and just to make sure that everybody's on the right page, how to run meetings effectively and efficiently, and mostly to stay in compliance with the open meeting law because there've been a lot of scrutiny of board decisions from people, you know, in Alabama and Alaska and, you know, as well as in Massachusetts. And so we've gotten a lot of complaints for other clients and that have been sort of sweeping around. So we think it's important to remind you all of that training and to be available to do that. The one other thing that I want to mention that is something that is a hallmark of our practice is that we like to do office hours, sort of a once a month, spend an afternoon at Town Hall, scheduling through the town administrator's office, allow department heads to come in, 15-minute sessions or half an hour sessions, to just ask questions, to resolve something that perhaps is still pending, to raise an issue that's new. And it's an opportunity for them to get to know us face-to-face as opposed to on the phone or over email. It's an opportunity for us to get to know them, to develop that relationship and that communication that is so important in resolving legal questions efficiently and correctly and also helping us sort of sort through what might be out there that we want to try to avoid as a problem so that we don't end up in litigation down the road. So that's something that we offer as part of our services. And I do it successfully in some of my communities and I think it's very valuable.
I do it as well. And the towns seem to think it's very helpful to them.
Mr. Daley, you want to take the next question?
I'll take the next one. Thank you. So what would you say is your general approach to providing town council services? How do you see yourself as your role within the town's organization? And how would you define a successful town and town council relationship?
I'll take it to start. Our role is advisory. We don't view ourselves as directly part of the town in terms of decision-making and policy things. That's your role. We're here to advise and we report to the selectmen, work with the town administrator. And our object is to try to be efficient. As I said earlier, we try to be the gate, the one person in the firm, be the gatekeeper of any new things that come in. Try to make sure, since we know everything that's happening, if somebody's already working on something and something very similar comes in, we want to make sure we gave it to the same person. Train new people as well, of course, in our firm, new associates to get up to speed on things. But our main role is advisory and to make sure that we tell you how you need to do things to do them legally and to be compliant with the law. If there's something specific that you want to do that we think you can't do, we would need to tell you that. But we also would help you to do, you know, some things are not black and white. There are some things that maybe the town may want to do that are avenues that you could take to get the correct result that you wanted.
This is something that I might just pop on because in the olden days, when I started practicing law, there were a lot of individuals who were practically a member of the board. They were at every meeting of everything. They hung out at the Town Hall. And I think, even though they weren't elected, I think that many of them actually started to try to make decisions. And so that's one reason we try to understand, you're the electants, not us. It's up to you to set the direction. What we can do, as Kate just mentioned, is help you understand what the pitfalls might be if you decide to go into a certain area so that you don't go into it blind. And if you decide to go into something that might have some areas of danger, that we can help you structure it in a way that might be most successful. So I see myself often as a risk manager, trying to help you avoid risks, legal risks that might be out there, but also reputational risks because one of the things that we're very involved in is, you know, understanding how if you need special legislation or if you need other things that require work up at the State House or work, you know, otherwise, that we can assist you in that because we know those processes. So we don't try to take over and tell you what to do. But if you, if we understand the direction that you're going and oftentimes will be working very closely with your chief executive officer, your administrator, to basically make sure that you can accomplish what you want to accomplish.
I'll just briefly add, I think that the word counselor is really important as part of the relationship. We really need to listen to what you all want to accomplish and then help you figure out the best legal path forward to accomplish what it is that you want to get done and understanding what the risks are, what the pitfalls are, and help you figure out that best direction to make your next decisions.
Mr. Wells, would you like to handle the third question? Or does he have the questions? If you're with us, Mr. Wells.
Thank you, Mr. China. Stephen, I'm you.
Sure.
I believe that I already answered the question. Question three dealt with how you prepare to handle a variety of municipal issues. So I think for full disclosure, as Attorney Hesse mentioned when she came in, and I mentioned this in the prior, our prior interviews, I think Murphy, Hesse, Toomey became counsel for the town in my third year on the police department. I think it was '86 or '87. It was early on and you have been entrenched here for all of those decades. I hate to say I'm that old, but all of those decades. That, and you do have, you know, a wide variety of issues for the community, everything from labor to land use issues, to civil action, to, in the early days, MCAD complaints. I remember when I first met Catherine, that was, I think, one of the first things she was handling. It's a case for the town, which, as you know, those are now, you know, my insurance company. But I think you've already touched a little bit on the type of expertise your firm has on staff and how you intend to assist. So I'm going to defer. I'll let you go to question four. I think they've already answered this question, but I do think for the listeners, citizens who are watching, I know there are former department heads watching. You have been entrenched here for many, many years and I think that it's important that we note that tonight. So that's it for us. I think that's pretty much, I think they've answered question three, Mr. Chair. I think you want to question four.
Mr. Wells, did you want to do question four then?
All right, so I'll do, so I'll go to question four, which is, as the team knows, many of our ongoing issues are political and potential, not political. Sorry, political. Politics in the brain these days. Potential litigation stem from, as you stated, land use issues. Can you just, you've touched on this a little bit, a little bit more about your firm's ability to handle complicated land use matters and maybe an example of a legal defense of a land use body that came before one of you, one before the firm.
Thanks, Mr. Wells. I'm just going to repeat the question a little bit because the audio is a little bit fuzzy.
I'm fine with it, Mr. Chair.
So, but we've been working together long enough where I feel like I know what Mr. Wells is saying. So the third question was, how do you handle a wide variety of municipal issues? He felt like, and I agree that you've kind of answered that in the first part of your question. So this new question is, many of our ongoing issues and potential litigation stem from land use-related issues. Could you talk about your experience or your firm's ability to handle complicated land use matters? And if you have an example of a successful defense of a land use body and the issues that were involved?
I can start since I've handled a lot of land use issues. And I'm actually currently handling two matters for the town of Milton, which are both, I don't know that I mentioned. In addition to court, I do administrative appeals and I know that Charis does as well. I have two matters for Milton. One is the Guile Road turf field. And that, we just filed all of our prefiled direct testimony, which is the way they do them at, it's a DEP appeal, basically. And the way they do them is you file all of your written testimony in advance so the trial doesn't start with direct exam. It starts with cross-exam. And I think they do it that way because it's so technical and scientific. So you want to get all the expert witness testimony in. And then the other one is a comprehensive land holdings case for Milton, which is also at the Office of Administrative Dispute Resolution. And that's a different situation. That's one where DEP overturned the Conservation Commission. I've had matters that involve two different town boards fighting over me as town council and one of them has to hire somebody else. Those have been, that's happened twice, where it was the DPW and the Conservation Commission. And the other situation, it was a city and it was the mayor and the Conservation Commission. In both situations, I represented, well, one I represented the DPW, actually. The other one, I represented the Conservation Commission. And there were many complex issues. Both of the, one of those got litigated all the way through the other one we resolved. And I'm not mentioning specific names of cases, but I had another one that, again, was my Mass Audubon client, but it was definitely a municipal situation as well. That was a situation that involved super fund hazardous waste. The federal government was involved and we ended up settling it. It was litigation and it went on for about 10 years. I was only involved for seven years. But I was really happy to be part of it because my client was Mass Audubon. They owned property next to the Houston River, which got contaminated by a large corporation out in Pittsfield. And the other parties included two cities, several towns, a grassroots environmental organization, as I mentioned, the EPA, Mass DEP, Mass Audubon, and a neighborhood group in addition to the grassroots environmental group. So that was litigation. We filed pleading after pleading. It went on for a long time with not only environmental issues because there was contamination. So it was Mass DEP Chapter 21E, but also the federal super fund was involved. But there were also land use permitting issues, trespass. They contaminated, the company that did the work acknowledged that they did the contamination and then they just wanted to figure out how to restore not only their own property, but the city of Pittsfield's property, all the municipalities who got affected and Mass Audubon's property. And that's what we ended up working out a settlement for. And the parties were really happy and we ended up having, they had a press release, groundbreaking ceremony and all the media was out there and all the federal and state representatives and so on because people were just happy that it got resolved. And while I feel like I had a small part in it because it went on for so many years and I was only one of several attorneys, it was still fun to be part of a resolution where it started out huge, many, many different issues, crossing over zoning, planning, environmental, and then it got resolved in a manner where everybody was at least somewhat relieved, if not happy.
My experience in the complex land use litigation has taken sort of three different paths, either Affordable Housing 40B, where I litigated at the Housing Appeals Committee whether or not a community met the 1.5% general land area. That litigation ended up creating new precedent for how the HAC actually calculates that number. We lost, but we came closer than anybody has ever come. I think the HAC said we were something like 1.48% instead of 1.5%, which was so tantalizingly close. And then I've done a fair amount of, including for the town of Milton, of Conservation Commission litigation, either in, through the appeals process, through the administrative appeals process at DEP or through the Superior Court process when you're dealing with a bylaw, as a local bylaw as opposed to the State Wetlands Protection Act. So I've done both of those pathways for Milton and many other communities. One of the cases that was very interesting to me and that we had a good outcome was for a different community where there was a challenge to a fields project that abutted some conservation land and some of the neighbors were unhappy about it and challenged it. I got the case kicked out. It was a local bylaw challenge. I got the case kicked out and dismissed at the trial court level on standing and then the appeals court affirmed that decision. So we got a really good result. And then the last thing that I do is sort of a garden variety challenge to variances and special permits coming out of planning board and zoning board. I've been working a lot, actually, with Jamie Donnelly behind me on a lot of those cases for other clients and we're developing sort of a great practice. A lot of the issues come down to standing, again, in all those cases. And that's really important to think about at the early stages because then you don't have to get into the detail. But I've tried a case, a variance case last year. So, you know, very strong experience.
Thank you. So could you, and this is something So could you, and this is something that we've been dealing with a bit too as a town, but we'd love to hear about your process for explaining complicated legal issues to non-attorneys, particularly board committee members, town meeting members, or the general public.
We do that a lot at our trainings, and I know I've done, and I know Charis has done PowerPoint presentations as well for mass municipal, large associations, also, more importantly, I think, in this situation, the mass municipal association, where the people that you're talking to are selectmen, town managers, various employees of the town, as well as volunteer boards and commission members. And we just explain it in simple language without using Latin and other legal terms. And I know that the PowerPoints that I've done, and the stuff that I've, the training and things like that that I've done for MACC, that's a big part of it, is just being able to explain things in simple language that everybody's going to understand. I'm one of the authors of the handbook for conservation commissioners that MACC puts out, we've updated it a few times and it's available electronically, and that was a huge part of what we do, explaining the powers and duties of a conservation commission, it's a huge book, it's like 500 pages in the hard copy. Summaries of cases, all of those things have to be explained in a way that people can understand, and the more complex they are, the more you've got to make the language just something that's Webster's dictionary versus a law dictionary.
I think, as Kate says, you really have to boil it down to the basics and be very straightforward and clear. I don't think that the, the board or town meeting needs to know the legal rationale behind the question, I think they need an answer to the question and then the guidance on how to move forward based on that question. And I pride myself on trying to be straightforward and clear and simple and not overcomplicate matters. I spend a lot of time in communities that have long town meetings and ask a lot of questions of council, and I really try to be efficient. I prepare in advance, and I may have all the piles of the law in my notebook with me, but I don't need to explain to you that, you know, what a particular case says, I need to tell you what you can do based on that case, and that's how I try to simplify it. I try to be really practical and understand that our audience is not lawyers, but they are everyday people who don't necessarily deal with lawyers in their daily lives.
Thank you. Well, Mr. Daly, do you want to do number six?
All right, so town council is sometimes called upon to provide their opinion in a public setting and may not be able to assert the attorney-client privilege, oh, Jesus, attorney-client privilege, if doing so would negatively impact the ability of committee members or town meeting to engage in debate on an issue. How have you navigated issues like this in other communities?
I've always approached town meetings where we know there's something that's going to be controversial, and if I've provided an opinion, I know eventually my opinions probably will get made public, and the attorney-client privilege is really for you, it's for the client, and if you get to a point where you want to release it, you can certainly do that. Going into town meetings, if an issue is really complicated or controversial, I will typically talk with the selectmen, either, either the chair, or if there's some way that I can do it, you know, obviously, if it's a sensitive issue, I'm not going to discuss it at a selectman's meeting, and I certainly can't talk with all of you, but I might talk with one member of the chair, and usually the moderator as well, and say, if you ask me this question, this is the answer that I'm going to have to give. And if I've given a legal opinion, I do what Charis said, I just boil it down to like one sentence if I can, keep it really short. I've had situations where in certain towns, people will then challenge the answer, and then you do have to cite the cases or the statutes, because people, in some communities, you do have lawyers, and you do have people that are going to look further and they want to look things up. And, but I, I do always try to keep my answers short and sweet, and, and again, notice if it is something that the town has wanted to keep to, protected under the attorney-client privilege, if somebody does ask it, I just, I keep my answer as short as I can that addresses the question without giving away, if possible, without giving away something that might still be privileged. And of course, there are things that, if something's in litigation, I don't have to give the answer just because somebody asked at town meeting. So there are, there are situations where it's going to still be privileged, even though, as I just said, that the protection is for you, and you may want to give it up, there are going to be situations where I'll advise you, no, you can't. This is still executive session only, minutes can't be given out, or it's still litigation, or whatever the matter is, if it's still unresolved and still privileged, then you have to keep it that way until the matter's resolved.
I think that says pretty much all of the points that I would make. I think the bright line for me is whether something's in litigation or not. I do not want to say anything in public that is going to impact the, the town's position in a piece of litigation. And I know that's sometimes controversial and it's difficult, but my role is to protect the town's interests. And as Kate said, you all hold the attorney-client privilege, if you vote to waive it, then we can have a more fulsome discussion, but otherwise, that bright line, you know, I, I try to hold to the rest of it. You know, when I give, when I write legal opinions to someone, you know, they're generally open and, and available to be discussed, and if I discuss them at a public meeting, then they're available to the world to, to take a look at. And, and I try to write my opinions, understanding that they're going to be seen by multiple eyes and perspectives.
And on that point, if I could just add, I learned earlier on to also be careful when we're drafting bills describing the work that we've done to clients, that, that's public record right there, and some municipalities, you've got reporters who are coming in and looking at the bills, so you've got to, while you want to be detailed and honest to the client, you don't want to say, legal strategy regarding motion for summary judgment that I'm filing against so-and-so, you, you've got to really be more careful and just write a pleading or something like that. If the bill's about to go out, but you're not going to be filing that particular motion for another three weeks, you don't want someone seeing it in the newspaper.
Yeah, that makes sense. So Ms. Hegarty has been able to join us, why don't we give you the opportunity to ask question number seven?
Okay, I'm not, if, if this is green, does this mean it's on?
You're on, you're on.
Can you tell us about a time where you initially gave advice, but later determined that a different approach on the issue was warranted? How would you communicate that to your client and address the issue?
I'm immediately thinking of situations where it didn't turn out that way, I'll be honest if I can think of one, but I, I've had two situations where I gave advice, the client didn't like it, and wanted, and then it became litigation, and they wanted me to represent them in court, and I couldn't because it, it was my opinion, and then they hired somebody else. But I, I didn't end up being wrong. In either of those situations. So.
Sometimes it could be not necessarily that you were wrong, but given the political climate of the town, or sort of the general zeitgeist, it may be the, the, the advice was the same, but the approach was different. I don't know if that helps broaden the spectrum out, looks like.
I've had two instances that I can think of where I've reconsidered my opinions, and I've been very clear, the facts changed, I didn't perhaps have all the facts when I issued the legal opinion, and so I issued revised legal opinions, and I talked about it with the people who said, your facts are wrong, and I understood what was wrong about the facts, and made sure that what the assertions were, were correct. And then I said, I'm willing to issue a revised legal opinion, you know, it's, I want to give you the correct legal advice, and if the facts have changed, the legal analysis may change, and it's my responsibility, it's not necessarily that I have to be right and that I'm infallible, that's not how I operate, I need to give you the best legal advice I can, so I'm going to, I'm going to change my legal opinion, not because necessarily someone's pressuring me, but because something substantially changed. And I was very clear and told, gave people the heads up, did all my due diligence, and then issued a revised legal opinion, and I've done that twice in my practice that I can think of for two different clients. Once, it went great and it resolved the problem, and the other one, it didn't go so great, and, you know, but then somebody went back and they had someone, actually, they had a third lawyer, a second lawyer come in and review the legal opinion, and the lawyer said, yep, this is correct, but, you know, it, it didn't matter, it was, it was difficult. There's no question that it was, it was a difficult situation and it was challenging to navigate, but at the end of the day, my ethical responsibility is to the corporate entity, and I want to do the best I can for that entity regardless of what else is swirling around in the world. So that means getting the facts correct and getting the law correct.
And just to hop on that if I could, I've had, I, I do a lot in the private sector, and what I have seen repeatedly is, as I said before, I'm a risk manager, so sometimes I can give you an opinion that you're going to have issues if you go this direction, that doesn't mean that you don't, that you have to say, okay, fine, we're not going to go that direction. You're the elected officials, and if you decide you want to challenge a law or whatever, that's up to you. And we can still be very effective counsel in many times. There may be times when we might need to take a back step and bring somebody else in, but the reality is, is that there, it's up to you as the electeds to decide what your policy choices are going to be. And just because we tell you that you would have to challenge the law, or the only way you could win that would probably be to go up to the SJC because you're not going to get any lower ones to read it any differently, we know how the AG will interpret it, or we know how this will be interpreted by other key boards. So it, it's, understand, as Charis and Kate both said, our job is to tell you what the law is, not to tell you what to do, and to tell you the risks if you choose not to act consistently with, with the law.
Right, and I have had that happen in the situation that Charis described, where I was given different facts, and, and in that situation, I do go back, of course, and I have at least once revised my opinion, once I was given different facts. And I also saw that happen with two other attorneys in my first firm, where they, and this is why I think the gatekeeper thing is so important, because I, I saw it happen where the town administrator, and, and I think it was the chair, but definitely one of the selectmen, both asked the question of two different attorneys in the firm, and the attorneys both thought that they were authorized, you know, the, the chair, the board of selectmen, it really should have gone through the town administrator in that situation, but in any event, they were both given different facts, and they both gave opinions, and of course, the opinions differed because they were based on different facts. So we had to get the right facts by talking to both, and maybe a third party in the town, and then revise the opinion. So that made me really cautious about that, like, no, it has to go through one person in town.
Yeah.
Once they all agree on what they want to ask, then that person asks, and we have a gatekeeper on our end too.
Thank you. Mr. Wells, I, we don't have a final question, but I don't know if you want to, I know that you posed the airplane noise question to other firms, I don't know if you want to bring that up?
I'm, I'm, Attorney North wants me to, so clearly, as Charis knows, and maybe Charis, this might be a good point, because I'm the only member currently sitting on the board that's really been involved in this. You know, Milton has been in a long-term fight with the FAA and Mass Port over the unfair dispersment of flight traffic over our community and, before this goes, and none of the other firms are even aware of this, so you might want to maybe give a little bit of brief, just quickly about how and what got us there, and just your thoughts on this as it stands today in the year 2025.
Sure, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Where to start?
Oh, you need an hour.
Yeah, no, I got it. Milton has been, well, there are routes over the town of Milton that go into the airport, and in, oh, boy, 2015, maybe a little before then, the FAA went to essentially electronic and satellite-based navigation control instead of ground-based navigation control, it concentrated the routes, and it also created some new routes over the town of Milton. So you now have a variety of at least five routes coming in and out over the town of Milton that create a whole lot of noise and annoyance. And we have gone, the town has gone through multiple iterations of working with the Mass Port Advisory Committee and its predecessor, the Logan Advisory Committee, to try to get relief unsuccessfully, has lobbied legislation somewhat unsuccessfully, but that I think is still sort of the best output, and has gone to court and sued the FAA over their last rulemaking, and took that up to the First Circuit and were unsuccessful, but I do want to be clear, Mr. Wells, you're the one who asked me the question about the Three Mountains and how big the mountain was that we were trying to climb, and it, it was, it is a Mount Everest-type climb to be successful in these types of cases, but I think we put a, a good product out there and, and worked hard to educate people about what the issues were going into town. I think the real success that you can have in these issues, and I have counseled the town about this in the past, is through lobbying and through grassroots, continued grassroots communication, working through your elected representatives at the state and, and federal level, and continuing to try to educate people about how difficult it is to live under these, these airplane routes in and out of the town. And I think that there is still perhaps more organization at the grassroots level that you could do with your community members, and that's sort of the, the piece that I'll end on right now, but I, I do think that there's more work that could be done. It just needs the Airplane Noise Advisory Committee to be up and running again and to really be connected to the community, which I, seems like it's been a little quiet lately.
We were, we're having some discussions about that.
Yeah.
So I believe that takes us to the end of the questions that we have. So want to make sure, if any board member wanted to follow up on anything that they heard, I know Ms. Hegarty, you can go back and listen to the recording.
I was listening the whole time.
Okay. Glad you were able to make it in person for a bit.
Yeah.
So barring anything else, our next item is a potential vote on town council services. Seeing as we're going to meet tomorrow, and Mr. Wells isn't here in person, I think it might make sense for us to have that discussion at that point, give us all 24 hours to digest what we've heard here, weigh it against what we've heard from others, and, and hopefully come to a decision tomorrow. Does that sound good for everyone?
I don't.
Yes, Mr. Chair, or Mr. Chair, Mr. Wells?
No, I'm not chair this one. No, Mr. Chair, I just, given in light of tonight's interview, I'd like to make a couple of phone calls that I hope I could get done by tomorrow night, but if we are not able to vote this, I may ask, and I'll call Mr. Lawrence first thing in the morning, that we postpone this to, when is our next meeting up to tomorrow?
It'll be the first one in September, is I think, like, the ninth or something? Yeah.
Okay, well, just, and I'll, I'll first thing in the morning if, if I do ask for that. I want to give this a little thought here, and I want to make a couple of phone calls. Well, Murphy Hesse has been an integral part of this community, as I noted, for four decades, and I just think this is a lot to think about tonight, I've won, there's a couple I just want to make, so if that'll be all right, I will call Mr. Lawrence, really make those in the morning if I want to go that forward, if that's okay with you. That'll be my only concern.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Wells, we'll, we'll, we'll wait to hear from you tomorrow about how the phone calls went. And then I think Catherine, did you want to say something?
I did, I just wanted to reiterate how much we would like to work with you. We did hear that there were, you know, with the town meeting coming up, and I think they addressed that, that we're ready to, the time issue will not be an issue, we're prepared to continue our work and jump right in on whatever, whatever that you need. And as, as Representative Wells just so kindly pointed out, we do have 40 years worth of experience, we'd love for you to re-up us for another 40, we know that, that, that might be a little bit of a stretch, but we also know that at your meeting last week, there was some discussion that paperwork would have to be done to, to get that done. I just want you to know that I did take the liberty of looking at the paperwork that had been in place, that I was able to find, and we can turn that around in 24 hours from our, from our standpoint.
Okay.
So whatever your timing is going to work for you, it, it, it will not be an issue in terms of our, you know, getting any legal documentation you want in place, Nick, and Mr. Chair and the board.
Great, thank you. All right, well, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Mr. Daly?
Seconded.
Seconded, we'll give it to Mr. Wells, we'll have to do a roll call vote, Mr. Wells is remote, Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Hegarty?
Yes.
Mr. Daly?
Yes.
Myself, yes, we are adjourned, thank you again for coming in.
Thank you.
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 Thank you.